We're getting started. Welcome to the November regular meeting of the Board. Joy, would you call roll?
Mr. Wycliffe?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge? Mr. McCune? Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Would you join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with recognitions and awards.
I'm thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with Ashley Umfree, Chisholm Trail teacher. Ashley, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Principal Rebecca Reyes. Ashley teaches social studies at Chisholm Trail and was selected as the 2019 Elementary Teacher of the Year by the Kansas Council for History Education earlier this fall. During the conference, she also received an additional honor and was selected as the 2019 Kansas Social Studies Teacher of the Year, which encompasses all grade levels. Congratulations to you. I know you have family here. We'd like to have them stand and be recognized. And for our next recognition, we'd like to honor Olathe West, Assistant Baseball Coach, Derek Leffert. If you could come forward, along with Principal... Along with Principal Jane Nowacek, Assistant Athletic Director Pat Butler, and Coach Richard Coach Leffert was recognized as one of the Baseball America Assistant Coaches of the Year by the 2019 American Baseball Coaches Association. In addition to his role as Assistant Baseball Coach, he also works in the front office at Olathe West, and he will be recognized at the A B C A convention in Nashville in January. Congratulations to you. We'd love your families here. We'd love your family to stand and be recognized as well. Then we have a very special final recognition tonight. If you guys stay at the front, of two individuals who have truly gone above and beyond for one of our students. I'd like to ask Dr. Courtney Sorban and Olathe West baseball coach Richard Sabbath to come forward, along with Assistant Superintendent for High Schools Dr. Jim McMullin. And I'd also love the Connell family to come forward as well. On May 6, 2019, Olathe West, now junior Brennan Connell collapsed on the mound during a baseball game against Blue Valley Southwest High School. Dr. Sorban, a Blue Valley Southwest parent, and Coach Sabbath immediately jumped into action, locating and using the AED and performing CPR until paramedics arrived. Tonight, we honor you, Dr. Sorban and Coach Sabbath, for the heroic measures that you took on May 6 and saving the life of Brennan Connell. We absolutely cannot thank you enough. of a former Board of Education member.
Ms. Martin, could you come to the podium, please? Get the opportunity to begin our recognition tonight for the distinguished service of one of our former Board members, Ms. Amy Martin. And I know there are many of your fellow Board members will want to make comments, but before I give you an opportunity to say a few words, I think it's important, in the time I got to work with you, I ran across recently a question and answer that was done with you when you were going to become the President for KSB. And when I saw your response to a question, to me, it seemed to just be very much about how you approached your service and your caring for the community, and not only the Olathe kids, but kids across the state. So the question is, what do you want people to know about school districts in Kansas? And your answer was, I want people to know that across Kansas, our public schools are the cornerstones of our communities and that great things are happening in them. I also want people to know that they shouldn't take this for granted. We've seen a push across Kansas and the nation to weaken our system of free and universal public education, and we need motivated people from all walks of life to take a stand for our schools. And that's exactly what you have done and served not only this district, but our state so ably. So thank you very much.
Well, I have to say that I've been off the board now for, I don't know, four or five months. I don't miss it. These guys work really hard, really hard, and I had the great opportunity to do it for about 10 years, and it's something that I have appreciated from the start and I'll always look back on fondly. It's such an honor to get to serve our community in this way, but more importantly, it's a privilege. It's really a privilege to work alongside some really fine people who've become good friends, and then also to get to work with some of the best administrators and teachers that I think we have in Kansas. I was with KASB for a few years, and so I got to travel the state and meet a lot of fine educators, but we really have something special here in Olathe. I can walk away knowing that I've left you guys in really good hands with your current Board and with our new superintendent, you know, Dr. -- or Mr. Allison is a doctor yet? Okay, that was on his list of things to do, so maybe I'll have to follow up again in a little bit. We do keep him pretty busy, so I guess that's understandable. But thank you for the recognition tonight. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I'm going to leave here and go have dinner and a nice cocktail and let you guys just keep up the work. Thank you, everyone.
You don't get to leave just yet.
Because I know that I would leave... This is where we get to talk about you a little bit, and I just want to thank you personally for, one, encouraging me to get involved in public service, to do this years before I ever ran. We had discussions about doing this and why I should consider it. I also want to thank you for, you know, we talk a lot about cultural organizations, and I just, you can't underestimate the impact that Ms. Martin has had on the culture of this Board, always pushing us to, while being respectful, to challenge each other. I know you and I personally have had some really long discussions about some things where we did not see eye to eye, but I think, I know that you opened my eyes to a different point of view, and I hope I did the same to you. And it was really that push to all of us to be better, right? To be better at what we do and to put in the time and put in the effort and ask the difficult questions that makes us all better. As we function as a better Board, we are better for this district and for the people in it. And so I just wanted to thank you for that, and I would... Anyone else that would like to say anything?
It's all still... So Amy, first off, I miss you. Haven't seen you for quite some time. For those of you that may not have been aware, not only did we serve on the Board together, but we were next door neighbors. So we have had lots of different opportunities, have lots of different discussions about lots of different things. Like Shannon, Amy, thank you again for encouraging me eight and a half years ago to step up and to serve this community and to serve this school district. It's been great. I've loved every minute serving with you. And yes, as have Shannon, there were lots of things that we agreed upon, there were several things that we didn't agree upon. But I think that's really what makes up this district and makes us very strong, is that we have the opportunity to have those discussions, talk through these things, have these debates, and then come to a consensus of what's important, what's right for the community and also for the school district. So again, thank you. And again, not only did she step off the Board, but she moved away at the same time. So I haven't seen her on either side of this, but so it's great to see you again. And again, thank you for all the years that you served and for everything you've done for this district. And again, all the help that you did as far as bringing several of us onto this Board and encouraging you guys to step up. So thank you for all that. Appreciate that.
Well, I'll go next. We sure miss you. And as the Felter family, we are so grateful for your service. When I think of Amy, I think of passionate advocate and defender of public education, but also student-focused. You always had the focus on the student, and that's really been a blessing. And so I've learned so much from you, and we really do miss you. Thank you.
And I'll carry on the same comments of when I thought was thinking about running, go talk to Amy. I was given the conversation, and the reasons that you ran and the reasons that you were such a great advocate for our students in our district were the reasons that I decided to, because working alongside you the last few years has been a real benefit to me as I've got more and more involved in. And really, anytime I see people at the state level or places, and it's always, how are things going without Amy? Right? And so I'm sure them things are fine, but they're getting there. But I truly thank you for all you've done for Olathe and really the state of Kansas on things.
Okay, it's really strange that I'm sitting up here and you're standing over there. No one has done more to prepare me for being in this position than you have, and the number of conversations that we've had about education and public education in Kansas, the issues in Olathe. I can't thank you enough for the hours and hours, not just of our conversations about education, but of friendship also. I wish you the best. Thank you.
So thank you again, on behalf of all of us, and, you know, honestly, just like, go enjoy your dinner and your cocktail.
Did we get a picture of her?
All right.
Should we? We didn't get a picture. Wait, Amy. Don't you think we need a picture of her?
Yeah.
Come on back, sorry. We need a picture. We didn't get a picture. Yeah, let's all go.
I think you should all get a picture.
Sure.
Everybody.
Sounds fun. Photoshop. Yeah. All right, we will proceed with public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board, and if a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio recorded as matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address.
Do we have anyone wishing to address the Board this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Presentations, American Education Week.
American Education Week is that great opportunity to celebrate public education, as we just heard Mrs. Martin talk about how public education is the backbone of this state and country. If you didn't know, nine out of 10 students attend public education or public schools in the United States. That's where children from all backgrounds and all circumstances come forward, come together to learn and be inspired by those who provide an excellent education to them. November 18th to 22nd is this year's American Education Week. It's the 98th annual celebration of American Education Week by NEA, and we honor all the people that affect and help our students, from the classroom teacher to the parents to the bus drivers, to the cafeteria workers, to the administrators and the substitutes as well. I'm going to have you watch a quick video that talks about recognizing people throughout the week.
The first observance of American Education Week occurred at the Fourth attempt in 1921 with the National Education Association and American Legion as the co-sponsors. A year later, the then U.S. Office of Education began to act as the co-sponsor, and the PTA followed in 1938. American Education Week celebrates across the country and re-honors how to best prepare students for their future. While our schools and methods are changing, educators still aspire to reach, educate, and inspire. Here in Olathe, we are focused on, cast back, their future 2032, with our strategic focus on the portrait of our graduates. It takes our entire community to reach our students. We are the best faculty, staff, and community here in Olathe. Working together, we can ensure every child is cognitively, socially, and mentally prepared for their future. To educate our students, we must engage them in not only rich content, but also critical thinking, problem-solving, and collaboration. Finally, we must inspire our students to stay and make connections. The National Education Association's 98th Annual American Education Week, November 18th through 22nd, 2019, presents all Americans with an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals for making a difference in ensuring every child receives quality education. Our AEW tagline, "Each Educates Inspire," reflects NEA's vision of calling upon all Americans to do their part in making public schools great for every child so that they can grow and achieve in 2032.
So whether you're a parent, a teacher, a community patron, we hope you'll stop by the schools and especially recognize our educators during American Education Week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Human Capital and Human Resources Division update. We got a couple of presenters, several.
First, I just want to say I'm so glad to be here. I've been with the district now 18 months, and my passion has really been, over my 35-year career, healthcare, public education, and human resources. And so I feel very fortunate that I'm able to blend and use a lot of my experiences here at the district, so I thank you for that. And as we go forward in the presentation, I could talk for hours about this. John gave us 10 minutes, so I'm going to try to say some really high-level key points in the next few minutes, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Donovan and Michelle Yezmick, and she, they will talk about talent acquisition. So a couple things, we're kind of doing both human resources and human capital. So human resources is our department, and we have, over the last 18 months, restructured the human resource department, so I'm going to give you a couple highlights on that. And then we'll also talk high level about key initiatives in the human capital pillar. I want you to know that we have always kind of keep three things in front of us. So one is, we are a large employer. Two, it's a very competitive market, and the workforce is changing, and, I mean, the labor market is really a challenge for all employers. So then, three, we think about what do we need to do to be competitive in the district? So that's part of what the human capital pillar has in it. What do we need to evaluate? Make sure that we are competitive with our pay, our benefits, creating a culture of health and well-being. So that's all wrapped into really our three key initiatives within the pillar of human capital. So just want you to just kind of frame it up. So if you look, I wanted to make sure that we knew what we were working towards. So this slide, really the desired state for 2024, that's really when we feel like we've been successful. So those are kind of some key targets that we're striving for. Another key component of our workforce is our workforce, and what are the demographics? This is very high level. It doesn't have all the diversity and by building, but we have 5,000 employees, and of those 5,000, 4,800 are eligible for benefits. We also have another 1,300 employees that are very part-time. They're not benefit-eligible, but they are employees. So we, when I think about, it's not our FTEs, but it's our headcount, we have over 6,000 employees that we are trying to engage, recruit, retain, and that are helping all of our students. The next three slides really then frame up some of the key things we did as we were developing our structure, and I think it's important for you to know some of the changes in our structure so that you'll understand how we're taking our delivery into working on our pillars and the three key initiatives. So with that, we defined what our delivery was going to be in our three focus areas. These are all the functions, high-level functions of human resources, and then we put them in, we grouped those functions into three functional areas. Staffing and talent acquisition is led by Dr. Donovan. Total rewards and HR operations is led by Jennifer Enzalone, and then HR partners, building, support, and service, is led by Dr. Steve Massey. So those are, there's lots of functions. We're not there. We don't have all of this wrapped up and tidy, but we're working towards that, and there's a lot of collaboration between those three teams. Then we get into really what are our strategies? So what our work in the last 18 months has helped us prepare and be ready to deliver and really work towards the three different key initiatives and making sure that we're attracting, developing, retaining, and engaging our team. So again, we have leadership, recruitment, selection, and development, and then compensation and benefit alignment. So there's high-level key initiatives and strategies. I'm happy to visit with you if you have any specific questions. Today, what I want to do is ask Dr. Donovan and Michelle to give you an update on talent
Good evening. Before Michelle and I share a little bit about some of the initiatives that we've implemented and give you a little update on the progress we've made, I want to kind of walk you through a little bit about our structure. One of the rationales for the structure we created was to create more efficiency and align responsibilities, as well as have more focus and direct attention on some of our initiatives and strategies so that we could make more progress quicker. So Michelle joined us in January. She is our manager of talent acquisition. She's going to share a little bit in a few moments about some of the initiatives and things we've done with classified staff. As we kind of looked at the big picture, classified staffing really needed our attention. Not that, I mean, we have some initiatives for certified staffing as well, but classified really needed to be a priority, and that's where we chose to begin. So one of the first things Michelle and I talked about when she came on board was, let's look at processes. What are some things we can do to become more efficient? And then also, we know with the shortages in, that you're hearing about in certified staff, the shortages there, as well as the competitive job market, we have to be more proactive in our recruiting efforts and then also look at what we can do to retain our employees. So those are kind of the big focuses that we recently had, and you'll hear a lot about that as we finish our presentation. We also have recruiters. We have designated, they have designated responsibilities. Some are focusing specifically on certified staff, the others on classified, and of course, there are times when they're working together as a team. Like this time of the year, we don't have a whole lot of certified positions to fill, so we're pitching, the whole team's pitching in to do what we can to get classified positions filled. And then we also, once a key factor that goes along with recruiting and retention is your onboarding orientation of employees. So we now have an individual focused on that onboarding, making sure all the paperwork's completed, that we have all the documents we need and everything in place to get them started as quickly as possible. As you saw, over 2,600 certified employees. A key is that we are, that we're compliant with licensure with a large staff and some of our unique programming that we have. That's very important. So we have a person designated to make sure, work with our teachers, to make sure their license does not lapse, or when we hire, that they have, they're hired in the appropriate licensure area. That individual also processes our column movements. We just finished processing 692 column movements for our certified staff. We also have a staffing support team. We kind of lumped those togethers before, together, they were kind of separated, so we kind of put that into a category of what we call our temporary employees, and that includes substitute services, or all of our substitutes working with them, the different temporary positions that we have, the extracurricular, which is all of those extra things our students are involved in. We have to have staff to manage that and facilitate that. That involves coaching, math wings at elementary, and everything in between. And then, of course, our Rule 10, our coaches, that their main responsibility is just the coaching. Another area that we want to focus more in-depth on is workforce planning. We've done, I mean, every year, we do some workforce planning. We're working with Chris Grelle to look at student projections and plan for next year, but we need to do more in-depth analysis and do, and make sure we have the right staff in the right positions at the right time. A little bit now about our certified recruiting and hiring. For the 1920 school year, we were able to have 40 early hires. What that means is we're hiring individuals now, or we start that process in October, November, and those individuals are guaranteed a teaching position in the district for the following school year. They just don't know yet what that assignment will be. So out of those 40 we hired for this current school year, majority of them were elementary. They're a little bit easier to do because we have more options to place them in positions, but we were able to, last year, to hire a chemistry and physics teacher, and we had those individuals placed by December or January and could have used more as we progressed through the spring and summer. And then, of course, special ed. And then, of course, special ed. And so that's a little bit about early hires. I'm pleased to share with you that we already have five early hires. Couple of those are special education. We're working on a couple chemistry for next school year. And then our goal is, by the end of the semester, to have 25 or 30. And then, of course, we'll have some more hired January, February, into the spring. This year, we started the school year, we had all of our certified positions filled except for four sped. I mean, our goal, of course, was 100%, but when we heard statistics across the state and even in the metro area, we felt pretty good that we were able to have 98% of our certified positions filled by the time school started. A few initiatives that we've implemented that you may have heard about or might be hearing more about. As we get those individuals hired early, it's important that we stay connected with them and through social media and just that they want that constant interaction and communication with us. So last year, we tried this. We had one, what we call early hire, kind of a social mixer, where we just kind of, it's informal, invite them in, just to get to know them. Of course, we have food and some different activities for them. We already are planning to have one either December or January for this year, and then maybe have even another one at this school year. We also are working on a short-term, long-term recruitment plan. And of course, we're looking at some of our needs across the district, looking at what different colleges and universities have to offer. So we are targeting going after candidates in those universities, even getting some of those candidates to student teach in the district and hopefully join our team. We've expanded, we've had, now that we have more of a focus, we've been able to expand marketing. Michelle's done a lot with social media and our recruiters. She'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, of course, we're constantly engaging other leaders to recruit. We offer a boot camp for student teachers. We've done that for two or three years now, where we offer a boot camp in the fall for our fall student teachers, and then one in the spring for our spring student teachers. What that involves, we do a little Kahoot activity with them. If you're familiar with Kahoot, it gives them, they can use their phones, their Surface Pros, iPads, whatever device they have. And we, they get to try to, we provide information about the district kind of in a game format. And then, we do different activities throughout the day to expose them to effective instructional strategies. We do some speed dating sessions and some different activities and involve different district leaders in those opportunities. Another area, last year and this year, we've been conducting some focus groups with some of our diverse staff to look what we can do to both recruit and retain diverse staff to better meet the needs of our students. And we hopefully will be able to at least have a tentative plan in place, maybe even by the end of the year. So what I'm going to do now is have Michelle come up, and she'll talk a little bit about some of the efforts and concentration, the different initiatives we've done for classified recruiting.
Hi there. My name is Michelle. Like they said, I've been here since January, so I'm glad to be here and kind of share some of the new efforts we're making on the classified side. We have a total new hire count of 308, which we're really excited about. Some of the advertising that we're doing to hopefully bring in some new talent to the district. We are ramping up our efforts on social media, so our Twitter account, Instagram, LinkedIn. We also have a Facebook page now for jobs, which is really nice. So we can share about our jobs and different things going on in the district, as well as interview tips, things like that, to really start to build our brand around talent. We're holding job fairs every Wednesday now at the Ed Center, so the community can get used to knowing that they can come here for interview days. They can come learn about positions, speak to a recruiter, learn about benefits. So things like that to help hopefully bring more people in and learn more about the school district. We've created flyers that we can pass out at school events, where we can hand them off to teachers and principals so they can pass them out to parents about different positions that we have available. We have created an internal referral program that we're excited about. We just launched that last week. So we've had quite a few responses from that. So we're hoping that people share their passion about the district with their family and friends, and of course, parents. So hopefully, that will bring some additional people in. And then, we brought in a bilingual recruiter. I think this is a huge thing. We want to make sure that we're giving all candidates a really good experience when they come on board. So we can, when we're recruiting them and talking to them about positions, we can speak to them in Spanish and help to walk through the process with them. She also helped us to create an offer letter in Spanish. So previously, we were getting an offer letter, and it was in English. And then we would go, we would talk through that on the phone with them. But now, they actually get an offer letter that's in Spanish, which is really nice. So just some of these key things that are helping to attract talent for the district that we're excited about.
Now, I'll share a little bit about some of the next steps that we are thinking about, discussing, trying to get in place. Some of these, we've started, but we're not, of course, where we want to be yet. One of the things that is probably common sense is that one of our best pools of candidates are student teachers. So we're working with Dr. Jaeger and Dr. Addison. Dr. Addison is helping, she's kind of our liaison. She is, one of her roles now is to do, she's worked with our Emporia State University, the PDS program, and does a lot, she has a lot of connections already with Emporia. So we're working with her. I visit with Ann at least once a week, and we kind of update and talk about what to do next. But she is doing more networking with colleges and universities so that we can get some student teachers in our district. We were working with Northwest Missouri State to try to get, they have a good special education program, so we're trying to get more of those students in our schools to student teach and then develop that pipeline there. Also, processes, we tweaked a few things, but we have a ways to go with our processes. We still are at a place where we're having to do a lot of things manually. We're probably the spreadsheet queens in our office. We do a lot of tracking. It's important to track data. But we have a ways to go and need to do some automation there to make us, to get us to where we want to be. We are, we will be probably recruiting and screening for operation positions, custodial services, and some of those down the road. And then, of course, enhancing and expanding our networking and proactive recruiting. We shared a little bit about what we're doing now, but we'll keep expanding that and being creative and different ways we can enhance that. And then, I already talked a little bit about diversity recruitment. Recruitment and retention are both areas of focus for us, and we will share more as we get that developed. Also analyzing retention and retention strategies, particularly in the area of our classified staff, seems to be a concern there with retention. We are at a place where we need to analyze our data a little bit more, get more data, analyze it, as far as like our pay practices, and we'll come back with some future recommendations on that. And then, of course, we'll continue to partner with leaders and use more social media. Michelle, we've talked about a referral program we've implemented for classified staff. Hopefully, we'll expand that to some of our certified harder-to-fill areas. Any questions or comments that we can answer for you?
Questions?
I have a comment just regarding the lens that's being placed on the attraction and retention of diverse, more diverse staff, both in certified and classified. And I'm happy to see that you're going to develop a really strong strategy. Because as we talk about focusing on student teachers as being part of our pipeline, we don't necessarily have a lot of diversity in our area universities that we can draw from. I think that the fact you're aware of needing to build a strategy that will help us, because we can't retain if we don't try. So I'm really pleased to see that that's a part of the strategy.
Thank you. And we're aware of that, as well as we look at the data from universities. So one of the strategies that we're working on right now is trying to come up with some ways to reach our students and get them interested in education. The Chamber next week is offering, there's a career fair. They expect about 800 students in the metro area. So we're taking a couple of our diverse teachers with us to that event. And our goal is to try to get students interested in education. But we are, we're going to have to start with our students. Right now, they're not at the colleges and universities.
Yeah, I had a similar comment. I appreciate seeing that too, because I think that's really, really important in a lot of ways. But I'd also just, I'd love to have a future report on that or that specifically as we get, as we get down the road on that, just to see. And also placement within the, within the school and that type of thing, because I think that's probably equally as important as just having a diversified staff, but just kind of where we're placing them as well.
Exactly.
But thank you.
Other thoughts or questions?
Just great info. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, and I think too, so often, people recognize what they have at their school, right? If we've got kids at schools, we know what we have at a school. But until you see, you know, that we've got over 5,000 full-time employees, I don't think people often recognize just what a large employer, a large organization this is. And so I just appreciate the hard work. I know it takes a lot to keep us compliant and make sure that we're recruiting and retaining the best individuals and all of the other things that have to happen just to keep an entity this size running. So I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you. Moving along, action, the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull off? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move to accept the action of consent agenda items 5.01 to 5.07 as presented.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
All right. Section 6, bids, contracts, and agreements. Again, I would ask if anyone has any questions on any of these items. It's a relatively short list this time around.
Did you have something, Rick?
Do you have something, Mr. Gary?
No, I was going to move to approve action items 6.01 through 6.08 as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Gary, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right. KASB Convention Delegate Assembly Appointment. So we will need one person to be our representative. I guess I would just ask, as we kick off this discussion, who's going to be at the KSB conference? I know I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Okay.
And Joe and Brent will both be there.
And Joe and Brent will both be there. So we can do this a couple of ways.
I like the way you're thinking.
If anyone would like to volunteer to do that, I've done it in the past. It's pretty straightforward. But I know that Mr. Beveridge has also said that he would do that if, he's going to be there. So unless someone's dying. Okay.
So what do we need to do?
We need, I need somebody to cease nominations and then, okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Felter, second by Mr. Gary.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
And you need a motion, so I'll motion to appoint Joe Beveridge as delegate.
We need an alternate.
What?
And I'm happy to be the alternate.
And Shannon as the alternate delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly on December the 8th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Ms. Schultz.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
And we continue the tradition of if you're not here, you get to do it.
I have been a part of it.
Yeah. Do we have a discussion, not typically on that, specifically on that, but just KASB? So I do represent Olathe on that board and coming off of that. So because it is a voted-on position, is that, do we have that on the agenda for the next month to change that?
We will.
Yeah, we will. We'll have to.
I just want to make sure that we thought about that.
So maybe be thinking about whether or not that would be something that you all would be interested in taking on. Can you talk just a little bit, Rick, about what that looks like?
What that represents? So the KASB, obviously, is the Kansas Association of School Boards across the entire state of Kansas. And what the opportunity is, is that the larger districts like Olathe has one representation, and we actually elect that person to get onto that board. You get out to Western Kansas, and you've got a representative that actually represents multiple school districts. But what really, there's several different parts of it. So there's really three positions that KASB really looks for. One is a nomination, to be able to nominate who the next leaders are for the KASB. Second one is the Legislative Committee, which Mr. Beveridge is on that today. And then there's the actual Board of Directors. And really what that is, there's a lot of pieces with this, but really what the board is there to do, just like any other board, is to really represent and look at and say, what should this association do? And their focus really is education across the entire state of Kansas. What I do find interesting in this, and for those that haven't been on this, it really gives you an opportunity to really understand education across the entire state. And most of us don't realize that what we do in the Johnson County area, and what they do in Western Kansas, how they're able to manage and what they're able to do and the resources that they do or don't have are vastly different. So it gives you an opportunity to really kind of look at this and see what's going on. A big part of it is the legislative. KASB offers a lot of services, which there's a lot of the smaller districts utilize a lot of their services. There's legal services, there's risk-based services, there's a lot of different things, insurance services and things such as that. What I do see Olathe utilizing mainly is the advocacy. And this is the advocacy and the legislative piece of this, of being the eyes and the ears of the school districts and working back with the legislators to help them understand what's important to the, to the school districts themselves. And so it does have, gives you that opportunity to be a voice for that. You are the voice in this position, specifically the voice for Olathe. You do get an opportunity, like Ms. Martin actually was able to move into the executive director positions on this, and she was actually the president of the board for a period of time, which really gets you even more detailed of what's going on across the entire state. But I do think it's a great opportunity. It gives you a chance to get a different perspective outside of what we do just here in Olathe, and it really helps you bring things back. So it's a great opportunity. And so the question I would have even for next week, because again, we'll make nominations and go forward with it, I do know Mr. Beveridge is interested in moving into the director. And again, just past experience, it doesn't always have to be this way, but typically, if somebody starts on the nomination committee, moves on to Legislative Committee, and then moves on to the Board of Directors, it really does help you because you get a chance to learn at each one of those. So just something to prepare on that, that if, in fact, Mr. Beveridge was the one that moved into Board of Directors, then you've got an opening in the Legislative.
So...
And just going forward. So just making, making us think about what we should, how we could look at that.
Yeah, and if he's interested in that Board of Directors piece, then I guess I would also say that just be thinking about, would the Legislative Committee be something that you would be interested in, as we would need to backfill that spot. And I certainly appreciate everything. I think that it's a great organization, and we've benefited a lot from KASB and the variety of services. So something to be thinking about for next month. And I guess I'd also say, make sure you're here.
I've been on the nomination committee two years in a row now, so I must have missed a couple meetings.
Very good. 7.02, Special Board Meeting, November 21st. Mr. Allison, would you just talk to us a little bit about what that is?
Yes, we wanted to put that on the agenda. We have in our board meeting calendar that as a potential special meeting. At this point in time, the reason we would hold that meeting, as you know, we're in the process of reviewing RFPs for our student transportation services provider. So should, depending on who is selected in that process, we've been informed that they would need to order buses so that they could be built and received in order for them to be ready for the beginning of the next school year. So they felt like that needed to be done by no later than the end of November. So we've established... So we've established that meeting, should that become necessary for that specific item if needed. We're going through that process right now, and I can't tell you if we will or won't, but we wanted to make sure that it was on everybody's calendar and they understood the reason for that special meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions regarding that? If not, I'd seek a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Schultz, second by Mrs. Felter.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, quite a few future action items to review for you there for next month. The Head Start Directors Report was in your written information. Topics for discussion, anything that any board members wish to discuss this month?
Are we working on our legislative positions since the Kansas Legislature will kick off in January? Have we had that on our radar?
Yes, it's been on the radar, and we will continue to work towards that. You will also be receiving shortly. We're trying to schedule again with the other six, with all six of the Johnson County Boards, a meeting so that we can talk through and see if we can come up with a couple of those things that are shared legislative platforms. So yes, we're moving that direction.
Good.
Good question.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Congratulating Mr. Whitcliff, Ms. Felter, on your reelections to the board. And I know Mr. Boyd is here today. Congratulations on your election as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Other topics. Okay, seeing none. Superintendent comments. Mr. Allison?
A couple items this evening. One, to thank Ms. Myers for coming to talk about American Education Week. I think that also tied in nicely to our human resources discussion, because we know that the real work is done in our classrooms and in our buildings and everyone that it takes to provide that type of quality education for our students. So important for our community to recognize the hard work that goes on in our schools. I wanted to point out, on the agenda, and as we talk about the transportation, to let our public know, as part of, we think of that pillar around resources and efficiencies, one of the things Mr. Hutchinson has been working on is developing a regular cycle by which we will look at various service providers and know that whether it's appropriate, it's every three years or five years or whatever that may look like, that we're bringing, doing our RFPs or whatever other process is appropriate, to make sure that we're getting the best service for the, for the best value for our community and our taxpayers. So within a period of time, health consultants, CPA, we're currently with transportation. Last year, we did our daycare. You'll notice on some of those future action items, we also have banking services. And we'll begin kind of an elongated process of looking at our internet provider. That one takes a longer view, almost 18 months, because when you make that transition, there's a lot, much like buses, there's a lot of equipment and other aspects. But over the next six months or so, that's why you're going to see a number of those services on our agendas, so that we, we've taken care of that. And then, we'll begin a regular process, as I said, as it's appropriate moving forward, so that we're always guaranteeing the best services and value. Lastly, had an opportunity today and want to thank Commissioner Randy Watson and Deputy Commissioner Brad Newanswander, who made a drive down to Pika to help with the Central Elementary Second Grade Boat Competition. So they've been working to learn about design and those types of things and built boats out of cardboard boxes. And they were tested today with guest pilots in their boats at the Oregon Trail Swimming Pool. And Dr. Jaeger was also one of those that took part, and a couple other folks from the district, but the commissioner and deputy commissioner came down. So getting an opportunity to talk to students, why did they design, you know, was it going to float? How big did they anticipate that the pilot of their boat would be? Some of those types of things. So great, incredible learning opportunity, that project-based, taking what they were learning in so many different areas, putting it together and seeing their excitement about that coming to a culmination today. So congratulations to Central and the second grade teachers for a job well done and a lot of fun for those of us that got to see it this morning.
Did it show on social media you got a little wet today?
Yeah.
I thought I saw that.
Yes and no. My boat designers did a fantastic job, and they were a little worried that they hadn't made the boat big enough. But I didn't get wet at all during the boat competition. It was afterwards that I ended up getting wet. So their boat was absolutely perfect, almost no water in it whatsoever. So it was, it was a lot of fun.
Excellent. Very good. Understand that we do need executive session 10 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I move to return to executive session for 10 minutes, starting at 6:57 PM, returning at 7:07 PM.
Do we need the rest?
We need to know why.
We need to know why.
Oh, for executive session.
For the purpose.
Oh.
It's on.
It's on the paper, I think.
Or not. Okay. Move to that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under comma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:07 PM in this room.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Schultz, second by Mrs. Felter.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.